targeted in Dorner's alleged revenge plot, which investigators say may have threatened over 50 LAPD officers and their families. Dorner said racism within the LAPD led to his firing and anger, but Sergeant Tingeridis doesn't buy that.
I've experienced racism, I've seen racism. I've never seen racism within the Los Angeles Police Department. I couldn't be prouder. The integrity, the compassion, the commitment that all the officers have on this department, it amazes me on a daily basis.
But public scrutiny has prompted the LAPD to reopen its investigation into Dorner's firing in 2009. There's also a matter involving $1 million in reward money. Who deserves it?
That $1 million reward is said to be the largest in local law enforcement history. It's also the most complicated, with over 30 donors pitching into the pot.
The LAPD and other agencies sorting through 1,000 tips from the public. It may take time, but LAPD Chief Charlie Beck wants the reward paid to someone.
Whether it's all to one individual or split among several, that recommendation will come through to me and we will meet with the individuals involved and ensure that the reward is fairly and equitably distributed.
In downtown LA, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Authorities say Dorner took his own life during that standoff in Seven Oaks near Big Bear. He's accused of killing four people, one of them Riverside Police Officer Michael Crane. The other was San Bernardino County Sheriff's Deputy Jeremiah McKay, whose funeral was held on February 21st at the San Manuel Amphitheater in Devois. Thousands of law enforcement and public safety officials from throughout the state attended the funeral. McKay, 35, was shot and killed during the shootout at the cabin. McKay was a 15-year veteran of the sheriff's department. He leaves behind a wife, a seven-year-old daughter, and a four-month-old baby boy. We now turn to news on the 2013 March election. The LA City Clerk's Office is ensuring all voting citizens have the information they need in the language of their preference. Rasha Goel has more.
Information kiosks, voter outreach, and social media are all helping get the word out on voting in the city's 2013 primary nominating election. You can vote by mail or vote at the polls.
All voter information such as the vote by mail application are handy, quick steps for voting at the polls, all the candidate statements, all the ballot measure statements, and the community calendar of events are also on our website.
A year-round multilingual outreach unit was also assembled to help meet the needs of voters who have limited English proficiency. Voters will have access to voting materials and assistance at the polls in English and eight different languages under the Federal Voting Rights Act. This year Hindi and Thai were also added to the list of languages. The six other federally mandated languages are Chinese, Japanese, Korean, Spanish, Tagalog, and Vietnamese. But voting officials say they're committed to reaching out to even those who speak other languages.
For the first time, we are also going to be providing outreach services in Armenian, which we're excited about.
The other change besides the addition of languages is the fact, as we are so proud to have our community partners join us in what we call our LA City Votes Campaign, we were gratified to find 20 organizations ranging from Thai, Japanese, Armenian, and so forth, to join with us and to go where we couldn't go, to go into their communities, their newspapers, their newsletters, their churches, and to spread the word about voting.
If you are coming to the polls to vote, it's pretty standard. Voters will pick up their ballots, put it through the vote recorder, make their selections, and take their ballot to a poll worker. An audio ballot booth is also available for those who are visually impaired or for those who prefer to listen to the information. Election officials say with 77 candidates competing for 17 seats, LA hasn't had an election like this since 2001. In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
The seats up for grab include the mayor's seat, several LA City Council seats, as well as the city attorney and city controller offices. If voting by mail, voters have until 8:00 PM on March 5th to turn in their ballots. And it's not just election time, as we all know but probably would prefer to ignore, this is also tax time. And as you get your documents in order, you should be aware of an often unclaimed federal tax credit that you could qualify for. The earned income tax credit is for households earning $50,000 annually or less. Councilman Richard Alarcon is spreading the word of its existence. Combined with the child tax credit, families could receive up to $5,800 in tax refunds.
Low-income, working households, you can make very minimal amounts of money and qualify for literally thousands of dollars in benefit if you apply.
Find out if you qualify during free income tax preparation being offered by the California State Board of Equalization by calling 323-980-1221. Let's talk parking in LA, specifically in Venice. It's following in the footsteps of other LA communities in helping commuters find parking spaces more easily. As Yana Kay tells us, there's an app for that.
These hockey puck-shaped sensors are part of a new parking system being launched in Venice. They send real-time parking information to your smartphone, that is, if you download the app. The app is called Parker, and not only will it help drivers find parking at available metered spaces, but it will also...
Save gas and be able to conveniently park. That's what we want to accomplish.
Officials say the parking app will provide motorists with information that may help them make better decisions about parking and even whether they should park at all.
At times when parking is hard to find, instead of adding to congestion, they might choose to walk or to bike to their destination.
The app will tell drivers how many spots are available on a specific street, how much the meter costs, and the area's parking regulations. The Parker app is available on the iPhone and Android. I'm Yana Kay for LA This Week.
Nearly 200 sensors have been installed throughout Venice on Washington and Venice Boulevards as well as Winward Avenue. The Parker app is also available in other parts of the city, including downtown LA and Hollywood. LEDWP and law enforcement officials have a warning for residents about a scam targeting LEDWP customers. As Cindy San Luis reports, it starts with an urgent phone call from an imposter and ends with some residents losing quite a bit of cash.
There's a million scams in a big city like Los Angeles, but here's one that's been particularly egregious, and it's been a scam that's growing for the past six months or so.
Officials from the LAPD and the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power gather outside the LAPD Administration Building downtown to announce that imposters posing as LEDWP personnel have been contacting customers by phone, informing them they are behind in payment of their bill, and threatening immediate service termination unless they pay and pay now with a cash card.
The victims in this case go out, buy a cash card, turn around and call up the phone number, and turn that money over to these scammers. The money's gone, and the victims soon realize that they didn't pay their bill, they just ended up losing their money. We need the public to be aware that if you get a call from DWP, do not, do not act on it. Do not listen to these thugs. Do not go down to a convenience store and purchase a cash card. The DWP will never ask you to do that. You will get ample notification if you're behind in your bill.
The LEDWP says you will get at least three notifications in the mail if you're behind on your bill, and they will never ask for financial information over the phone.
If this occurs, you should hang up immediately and call 1-800-DIAL-DWP. That's 1-800-DIAL-DWP. Do not listen to these thugs that are taking advantage of you. So we want to make sure the public is aware. In addition, you can also go online at ladwp.com and you can check your bill.
I can't stress enough that no one from the Department of Water and Power is ever going to call a customer up and demand money from them. There's a number of ways they can pay.
In fact, LEDWP personnel do not accept payment information verbally over the telephone, only through their automated system. You can, of course, also pay online, in person at a branch, or by mail.
We have been doing everything possible to get the word out not to fall for this scam. We've been putting it out in our bill inserts, we've been putting it out in the papers that go out to our customers, our ratepayers, but we still see this scam continuing and increasing.
Police say you can help stop these imposters by writing down their phone number and reporting it to the LEDWP and/or the LAPD. I'm Cindy San Luis for LA This Week.
The LAPD joins a grieving mother whose son was the victim of not one but two back-to-back hit-and-run incidents. As Rasha Goel reports, police need your help to find those responsible for taking a young life.
A $50,000 reward is being offered to help find the perpetrators of a fatal hit-and-run that killed 22-year-old Thomas Price.
Very hard worker and a very good boy, and he was everything to me.
The accident happened near Reseda Boulevard and Besmer Street in the city's Second Council District when the young man was crossing the street. What makes this case even more outrageous, police say, was that he was hit by not one but two cars.
It was an issue of a driver who was not cautious. He did not stop to render aid, to exchange information, to call 911 as the law requires. He did stop momentarily, but then he chose to leave the location without providing aid. 20 to 30 seconds later, a second car comes over and again runs over Mr. Price.
The first vehicle is described as a possible 1997-98 dark gray SUV with a 4-5-inch lift kit. The second car is described as a compact passenger vehicle.
If that person knows anything out there regarding what happened that night, has heard anything, if they could please come forward, my family needs closure in this.
If you have any information, please call 1-800-222-TIPS or 1-800-222-8477. In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Investigators have run out of leads and hope that a monetary reward will serve as an incentive for someone to come forward with information regarding this case. A longtime spiritual leader from South Los Angeles receives a posthumous honor from the city, and the celebration was one that also served as a walk down memory lane for many in the community. City workers mount a plaque onto a light post, letting motorists and pedestrians know that they have just entered Dr. William Matthew Brent Senior Square.
So many have contributed so greatly to our lives. For 44 years, Doc and I were married, but when we married, he was already pastor here. He kidnapped me from Dallas.
Flanked by her family, the wife of the late Dr. Brent Senior thanked her husband's congregation for their love and support. Brent spent a large part of his adult life serving as a preacher until his retirement in 2006.
The legacy of Dr. Brent found a home right here on this corner at the Evening Star Missionary Baptist Church, where he served for some 41 years as its senior pastor.
And it was at the intersection of 59th and Brentwood Streets in South Los Angeles, right outside the church he shepherded, that plaques bearing his name were erected by the city of Los Angeles.
He and my uncle Reverend Thomas were friends, so we take this moment to thank the city of Los Angeles for laying claim to his historic memory.
The plaque dedication ceremony was intended to celebrate the life and legacy of one special man.
It's good to be reminded of our history and those who helped make the history because times are changing.
But it also turned out to be a celebration of a special period in time for this tight-knit South Los Angeles community. Brent passed away this past October. LL Cool J, LeVar Burton, and Danny Glover. These individuals are being recognized this year by the city as part of the city's annual African-American Heritage Month celebration. Rich Samuels reports.
The mayor and city council recently kicked off this year's African-American Heritage Month with a celebration inside city council chambers and outside in city halls forecourt.
We're still at the crossroads of freedom and equality. So much has been achieved, so much has changed, so much has been realized, but so much is still left to be done.
This year's honorees included LeVar Burton, best known for his roles and roots in Star Trek: The Next Generation, and long associated with children's literacy as the host and executive producer of Reading Rainbow. Danny Glover, actor, producer, and humanitarian, has a long list of credits including Lethal Weapon and Dreamgirls, and is recognized for his wide-ranging community activism.
When we talk about art, as Algie Davis says, "We're gonna need artists to save us from machines." We need to cultivate that art right here in those places, in those communities, as we see in those communities. And here, an African-American Heritage Month is a perfect way to recommit ourselves to that venture.
LL Cool J is a Grammy Award winner, an actor, an entrepreneur, an author, and philanthropist.
Celebrating my heritage makes me eager and excited about the opportunity to celebrate your heritage. And that is, I think, something that will make the fabric of our country that much stronger yet.
The celebration continued in city halls forecourt and is only the beginning of a month-long celebration of art, culture, and community. I'm Rich Samuels for LA This Week.
The city's Department of Cultural Affairs is showcasing a full calendar of Heritage Month events at its neighborhood arts and cultural centers. The county's first female African-American lead prosecutor is also honored at city hall. The city becomes the first big city in the world to sync up all its traffic lights, and city leaders usher in the Year of the Snake. These stories and more in City Beat. Mayor Antonio Villaregoza recently joined the LA Department of Transportation in flipping the switch on the final traffic intersection in the citywide signal synchronization program at the northwest corner of South Broadway and Martin Luther King Boulevard. This makes all of Los Angeles's 4,398 traffic signals part of the Automated Traffic Surveillance and Control, or ATSA, system. The completion of this program is expected to decrease average travel time for commuters throughout Los Angeles by a whole day a year, and improve air quality by reducing greenhouse gas emissions.
I like to call her prosecutor with a heart.
Los Angeles County District Attorney Jackie Lacy was honored at Los Angeles City Hall by Councilmember Bernard Parks and his fellow council members as part of Black History Month. Lacy was sworn in last December as the first African-American and first female Los Angeles County District Attorney.
I realize that while being elected made history, I intend to earn my legacy. And we have already launched our priorities.
Prior to being elected LA County Prosecutor, Lacy spent most of her professional life as a prosecutor, manager, and executive in the Los Angeles County District Attorney's office. The city's Department of Recreation and Parks, along with the Los Angeles Housing Department, has opened the ninth of 50 planned parks as part of the city's 50 Parks Initiative, this one in South LA at 4,600 South Orchard Avenue. The 50 Parks Initiative is a public-private partnership that will add over 170 acres of new open space to the city by transforming formerly blighted properties. Each park features decorative fencing and automatic time-lock gates that ensure that the parks close automatically after hours. Orchard Park also features some outdoor exercise equipment. Meanwhile, the city has also broken ground in the Harbor Gateway area on another 50 Parks Initiative project. The future Harbor Gateway Pocket Park will be located at the corner of Torrance Boulevard and Denker Avenue. The Los Angeles City Council, as it does every year, celebrates the arrival of the new Lunar New Year. This year is the Year of the Snake. Councilmember Ed Reyes, who represents Chinatown, shares the legend behind the Chinese zodiac.
Buddha asked all the animals to meet with, to meet him on Chinese New Year. The 12 animals that came first each had a year named after them.
The 2013 Miss Chinatown and her court were also on hand for the celebration in council And the Chinese New Year celebration moved from city hall to the streets of Chinatown as families from all backgrounds helped mark the Year of the Snake. Rasha Goel takes us to the Golden Dragon Parade.
Happy New Year! Dragons, floats, and more. In commemorating this important holiday for Asian-Americans, the Chinese Chamber of Commerce of Los Angeles hosted the 114th Annual Golden Dragon Parade and Festival in the streets Joining the fun were Councilmember Ed Reyes, who represents the Chinatown district, as well as this year's parade grand marshals, Mayor Antonio Villaregoza, and LAPD Chief Charlie Beck.
Hello, the merchants here, the community members here, thank you so much for keeping Chinatown so vibrant.
This celebration is the oldest and one of the most recognized New Year celebrations in the country. From a parade in the heart of LA's Chinatown to carnival rides and food trucks, there was a little something for people of all ages as they celebrated the Year of the Snake.
We're having a great day with our friends, and we got lots of Chinese chocolate money, and we got a little dragon, so it's a great day.
A little taste of a culture from across the world here in a city that embraces diversity. In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Lunar New Year is the most celebrated holiday of the year for nearly 1.5 million people of Chinese, Korean, and Vietnamese descent in Southern California. It's a joint effort by the Dodgers' Dream Foundation, the LA 84 Foundation, and the city of LA. This program builds more parks where LA's kids can score home runs. Anna Marcos has more on the opening of the latest Dodgers' Dream Field.
Go Dodgers! A rallying cheer and another Dodgers' Dream Field goes up in LA. This one near Reseda's Rec Center marks the 25th Dream Field the Dodgers' Dream Foundation has scored in the last couple of years. The program builds baseball fields so kids in all of LA's neighborhoods can go up to bat.
My kids love it. My kids play baseball, so that just to see them, you know, interact with the Dodger players, it's a great experience for them.
We can grow young Dodger fans, hope they grow into mature and then older Dodger fans, and keep the generations growing with Dodger baseball.
Out on the field, a little baseball 101 for the kids with both Dodger hopefuls and Dodger legends, such as Ramon Martinez, Al the Bull Ferrara, and Steve Yeager.
We're just teaching, trying to teach them the proper technique of just catching a ground ball.
There are fielding clinics, base running clinics, pitching clinics, and hitting clinics. This is equal opportunity baseball, no matter what your sex, age, size, or ability.
Baseball is our national pastime, and you guys are just now the next generation. You'll be able to learn this wonderful game.
This park is for you, kids. We built it for you. We want you to use it. The Dodgers want to see all you kids here. They want to see this park used every single day.
And with more Dream Fields on the way, expect more home runs, not just for the Dodgers, but for the kids, as more future baseball fans get the chance to play ball. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
And in this week's List of Things to Do, the annual Lantern Festival at the El Pueblo Historical Monument, getting creative at an open studio event, and free yoga at one local library. The Chinese-American Museum will hold its annual Lantern Festival celebration on Saturday, March 2nd, from noon to 7:00 PM, at the Chinese-American Museum located at 425 North Los Angeles Street at the El Pueblo Historical Monument across from Union Station. A hugely popular holiday in the Chinese culture, Lantern Festival occurs annually on the 15th day of the first lunar month to mark the closing of Chinese New Year festivities. Each year Lantern Festival spotlights a Chinese-American recreation of a traditional village street fair featuring brilliant lantern displays, Chinese opera-style face painting, kite building, acrobatic and lion dance performances, and even a spirited glow-in-the-dark Silver Dragon stage performance. Go to camla.org for more details. And libraries aren't just for reading anymore, you can even get your exercise in. The Memorial Branch Library offers free basic Hatha yoga classes on many a Saturdays. The next one will be held on Saturday, March 2nd, from 12:15 to 1:30 PM. Bring a yoga mat or heavy towel and wear comfortable clothing. The Memorial Branch Library is located at 4625 West Olympic Boulevard. You can find this and other classes by going to lapl.org and clicking on the calendar section. Meet up with friends or bring your family to Moca Grand Avenue downtown on the first Sunday of every month for an open studio workshop. Explore works of art on view through conversation and activities inside the museum and make your own work on the sculpture plaza. The Sunday Studio Event is appropriate for all ages and ability levels. The next one happens on Sunday, March 3rd, at 3:30 PM. Moca Grand Avenue is located at 250 South Grand Avenue downtown. The event is free and no reservations are required. Go to moca.org, click on the program's link for the drop-down menu, then select Sunday Studios. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us, I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Hi, I'm Craig Erwin in Los Angeles.
Hi, I'm Craig Erwin in Los Angeles.
Hi, I'm Trenton Erwin, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35, Our City, Our Channel.
We will be starting momentarily. Good morning, it is Tuesday, February 26th. Welcome to your Los Angeles City Council. My name is Herb Wes and I'll be today's presiding officer. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 AM. Madam Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Alakon Buskayeno, Englander, Garcetti, Uizar, Corret, LeBange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zine, Weston, Timmer is present in a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Parks moves, Zine seconds, next.
Committee for resolutions for approval.
Mr. Englander moves, Mr. Corret seconds.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday and now would be the time for the flag salute.
If I could ask everyone to rise and will be led in the flag salute by Councilmember Zine.
Everyone please stand, raise your hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Okay, let's run through the agenda. Madam Clerk, if we could?
Items 1 through 6 are items noted for public hearing. There's a Department of Building and Safety request to continue item 6C to April 2nd.
Okay, without objection. Do we have any cards on these items?
Cards on item 1.
Okay, so let's hold that item. Members' specials? Members' specials. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Next section of the agenda?
Mr. President, just for the record, for items 2 through 4, those ordinances will be held over for second reading unless reconsidered.
Okay. In the event that we get 12 members, we shall reconsider those items. So let's go on to the next section.
Items 7 through 17 are items which public hearings have been held. There's a request to continue item 10 to March 6.
Without objection. Specials, members, members' specials. Mr. Corretts?
Item number 8, please.
Number 8 will be held at the request of Paul Corretts. Other specials, members? Okay, let's prepare to vote on those remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes. And again, Mr. President, for item number 9, that ordinance will be held over for one week unless reconsidered.
No problem. In the event that we get, and I think we might get to 12, and then we'll reconsider all of these items and vote again. Okay, let's go through the next section.
Items 18 through 25 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. Do we have cards?
Cards on items 20 and 24.
Okay, let's hold those items. Mr. Englander, specials, members, Mr. Englander.
21 and 25 for Mr. Garcetti.
Okay, we're holding items 21 and 25 for Mr. Garcetti. Okay, members, other specials, let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
On the supplemental agenda, items 26 through 28 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, specials, members, 26 through 28. Mr. Englander?
28 for Mr. Garcetti as well, please.
28 for Mr. Garcetti. 26 for Mr. Rosendahl. Let's vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes. Mr. President, now that there are 12 members, do you wish to reconsider the ordinances?
Okay, why don't you identify the ordinances, every one of them, and then we'll vote on reconsideration, and then we will vote on the items.
Those are items 2, 3, 4, and 9.
Okay, members, this vote is reconsideration. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now, Mr. LeBange?
Fourth with, please, on number 4.
We haven't voted on it. We're going to vote on it right now. Now we're voting on the items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Fourth with on item 4 for Mr. LeBange.
And there's also requests for items 2 and 3 to go fourth with.
So ordered. That brings us where on today's agenda?
To presentations or items called special.
Okay, I want to recognize, in the event that she's ready, Ms. Perry for a very, very special presentation. Ms. Perry, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like Mr. and Mrs. Van Dyke to join me here at the podium. Thank you. I'm really thrilled to stand here with my good friends, and they're good friends because I know them through their work on combating homelessness in Skid Row. Dick Van Dyke and his lovely wife, Arlene Van Dyke. And I'm honored to stand here and to recognize his lifelong talents, his legendary and philanthropic contributions to our city and to our country. So Dick is known for many, many things, his Tony, his Grammy, his five Emmy Awards, and his latest achievement. He was honored by the Screen Actors Guild of America with a lifetime achievement award. He is a lifelong entertainer, and of course, it's an honor to receive praise from your colleagues, but to be recognized for over seven decades of entertaining people is quite an accomplishment and something that I believe everyone will agree, Dick Van Dyke deserves. He is a multi-talented man who is not just an actor, but a comedian, a writer, a producer, a singer, and from what I saw at his wedding, he's a good dancer. And many of us have our favorites, Bye Bye Birdie, Chitty Chitty Bang Bang, or his 1964 Grammy Award-winning performance alongside Julie Andrews in Mary Poppins. And outside of the big screen, he started from 1961 to 1966 in everybody's favorite CBS sitcom, The Dick Van Dyke Show. He is also a talented producer and director. Most recently, he helped to produce Cabaret at the Malibu Theater. Now, why I know him and why I feel so passionate about both of them is they're huge supporters of the Midnight Mission in Skid Row. And he's there all the time, not just for the holidays, but all the time. And Arlene shares that passion, and he brings a lot of joy to the people who are served there with his singing group, and I'm going to let you tell the name of it again, because I forgot, but they perform on Skid Row too. So today, we honor him for his accomplishments to the culture and art of our great country, and congratulations on your latest lifetime achievement. You're a man of many, many talents and deserving of every honor. Ladies and gentlemen, Dick Van Dyke.
In fact, Mr. Van Dyke, before you speak, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rosendahl. In fact, my guess is there's going to be a bunch of folk that pop up here, starting with you, Billy.
Thank you, Mr. President. We were laughing a little bit before about his smile and how he keeps that energy so positive all the time. You've been an inspiration to all of us all these years. God bless you and thank you for everything you do for all of us. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. LeBange?
Very much, I just wanted to rise. This is television history, this is theatrical history, and Mary Poppins, I could still see you right now with that hole on the rooftops. And I have a couple London people here right now who have vouched for that. Dick Van Dyke, with Ms. Perry, for you to bring him in is a great special treat for us, because the work that he does at the Midnight Mission, which does not take any government money, it does it its way, and it's very special. Larry Adamson and all the, Larry Adams, and all the Adamsons and all the folks that are down there are so special. And I got an idea this year, so I'll just confess it, Jan, and as you said, you know, a lot of us all come down at Thanksgiving. Well, I missed it this year. And what I did in December, I sent a bus down to the mission, and we went up to the observatory, and there are guys who hadn't been there since 4th grade. And just a week ago, Sunday, we went to the Peterson Museum with the Midnight Mission to give an outside exposure to the community. I want to thank Jan Perry for her leadership on homeless issues and what she's done to transform and change, but I just want to thank you for bringing Mr. and Mrs. Dick Van Dyke, because I hope to live as long as you, brother. You're the happiest-looking guy in town. Dick Van Dyke.
Mr. Zine?
It's a big thrill for me to be here. It was easy to win the SAG Award, I simply outlived the competition. So it's been my plan to die young as late as possible. I guess March 5th is a little too close for me to announce my candidacy now, so I'm... Well, I came to California in 1947, so I've grown with this town. I have, and went into, well, never mind. I saw you dancing on television last night. You're a ballroom dancer. Jan, I'm a dancer, you never asked me. I didn't know that. I've known her for, I guess, 15 years. We've been going down to the Midnight Mission at 6 and Pedro, our new one. If you haven't been down there, you're in for a real eye-opener. It is the model for all of the other institutions like that in the country. And Jan is always there, every holiday, whenever I go down there. She's been such a support, and when we're in trouble, we call Jan, and she's right there. You know, I've been following your career since the Bradley days.
Whoa, that's a long time.
Yeah. She's always down there in the trenches. What I like about Jan as a politician, if she's wrong, she'll admit it. I've heard you say, "I was wrong." I love that about you. I think I could run for office. My platform would be to bring back everything that's gone, the red line and POP, all the things that only Ralph Story and I remember.
Good idea, huh?
That's a good idea, yeah.
I do thank you so much. I'm so honored, I'm so happy to be a citizen and active under this. I would like to say, on behalf of my other Angelians for myself, I want to see some austerity in this administration, but don't touch my entitlements. Thank you, Lake.
Very well, very well. Enter just as you want.
This is my child bride. This is Arlene, who's my right hand.
Am I supposed to speak? Sure. Oh, I don't. I don't.
She's the power behind.
I don't speak. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Oh, no, we still have one more speaker, Jan. Mr. Zine?
We're not done yet, we're not done yet, Mr. Van Dyke. In addition to what you've done for the homeless population, there was an event, and I was honored to be the auctioneer out in Malibu, Dr. Monwar's residence, and it was to help raise dollars to help save animals in the city, the coastal area, the folks that were trying to raise dollars for the great cause to help animals. And you were there, you were there, I think you were there too.
Oh, yeah.
Being the live auctioneer, I auctioned you, your wife, I think I auctioned off your whole family. We received a lot of money for that, because as we were auctioning off items, well, two?
No, it was the two of us.
Two of you. Oh, yeah, the dinners with you, and somehow it was created, and you were so generous with it, and you went along with it so well, and it raised a lot of money for the cause. So not only helping people, but helping animals, and it was honored to be there, to see you in action, and your comedy was great as we were there performing for these people who were paying to come to this wonderful event at Dr. Monwar's house, the beautiful, beautiful place in Malibu. So I just want to congratulate you on this honor by my colleague, Jan Perry, but what you've done, not only for people, what you've done for animals, what you've done for the people of this great city. A great career, a great entertainer, and I can remember, and I'm not a young guy, but I can remember seeing you. I can remember seeing you when I was a young guy. And you were always funny. It was always, always wonderful entertainment. And we think back to the days when comedy was comedy, and it was comedy that the children could watch, the parents could watch, everyone could watch, and it was very classy, and you are a very classy man. So congratulations for this award, you and your lovely wife. Well deserved. Congratulations to you, Dick. Thank you.
Let's give one more round of applause for Mr. Dick Van Dyke.
I think Jerry Van Dyke is ready.
It's very, can I have my voice? Keep up the good work.
Okay, Mr. Krikorian. Mr. Krikorian, are you ready with your presentation? Okay, at this time, I'd like to turn this over to Paul Krikorian.
Come on up. Stand right by me. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Members, 100 years ago, in 1913, the population of Los Angeles was a little bit more than each of us have in our council districts today. Woodrow Wilson had just been elected president, and the Los Angeles Aqueduct was about to be completed, changing the face of Los Angeles. In that same year, a group of teetotalling journalists, temperance advocates, got together to form the Los Angeles Press Club. And in the 100 years that have passed since then, the L.A. Press Club has written the history, the members of the Press Club have written the history of this city as it's evolved. And we certainly know that journalism has changed since the days that newspapers like the L.A. Evening Herald, the L.A. Tribune, and the L.A. Record were read by Angelinos back in that year. Since that time and the century that's passed, the L.A. Press Club has advocated with, fought for, and stood alongside reporters and the organizations that have worked to ensure the vitality of the fourth estate. But certainly, the shifting media landscape in that time has created challenges for the L.A. Press Club, as have changes in society, historical changes, like riots, the Great Depression, of course, prohibition. All of those things have had an influence on the L.A. Press Club. And for a time there, it seemed as though the mission of the L.A. Press Club would be derailed. But about 20 years ago, the club was reinvigorated with a renewed sense of purpose, and it rose again, doing so at a very important time for journalism in this city and around the country. We all know that today, just about anybody with a laptop computer and an internet connection can call themselves a reporter. And the notion of professionalism in this industry has sometimes been in question. But it's the members of the L.A. Press Club who've devoted themselves to the professionalism of journalism and improving this profession that have really been the standard bearers for ensuring the quality of journalism in our area. The almost 500 members of the Los Angeles Press Club today ensure that we continue to have a venue to advocate for quality in journalism. The Press Club has outlived most of the city's newspapers and other outlets, and today, it continues to play an active leadership role in the evolving Los Angeles media and journalism scene. So it's a great pleasure to recognize with all of you the 100th anniversary of the birth of the Los Angeles Press Club, and joining me here today to mark that centennial are board members of the L.A. Press Club, Maria Armudian of KPFK and Christina Via Cortez, who, Maria's been a reporter for many, many years and an author, working throughout the city and world to report on the importance, important events, both locally and globally. And Christina, who is familiar to all of you, used to work in this building with City News Service and has moved on now to cover the county for the daily news. So please join me in welcoming Maria and Christina to the podium.
Okay, before, let's give them a round of applause, but we have our own member of the press corps. And I'm going to defer to Mr. Bill Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have to laugh, because yesterday in the mail, I got my Press Club credentials again, that I can put on my windshield and others. And I'm always, every year, not only do I pay my dues, but I also pay money toward the foundation. Look, journalism is key in a democracy. The more you understand the issues, the more you focus on the issues, the more you're able to decide what to do in a democracy. I am ashamed to say that our media is irresponsible today. Some of the new social media is great, but these broadcast television, two minutes of bleeding the leads and then to commercials, people don't know anything. So what happens is 30-second soundbites is the only way people learn things. The democracy is at a crucial point, and the Press Club gives working journalists an opportunity to mix with each other, get strength from each other, and realize that their profession is key in a democracy. I had the pleasure in 1999 to be president of the Press Club. I was a big shot in the cable industry. Obviously, I was able to raise the money and take it out of its doldrums and, you know, put Pat Morrison in as the president, who was an icon of every aspect of it, so that younger journalists can see through Pat Morrison, the leadership. And then there were a whole bunch of other good people that took over and re-energized the Press Club. It is a critical element in a democracy that journalists have a chance to work with each other and appreciate each other, and the management team, which is all about pretty faces and no news, has to get beyond where it is so that the American people can become more educated, so that they can make a difference in the political process. So God bless the Press Club, and thank you, Paul, for recognizing the 100th anniversary. Thank you.
Mr. Krikorian, back to you and our special guests.
All right. Well, again, please join me in welcoming Maria and Christina to the podium.
Well, I just wanted to first say, echo what Councilman Rosendahl has said and Councilman Krikorian has said, and thank you, both of you, very much, first of all, for supporting us in this next, very challenging era that we're up against in trying to keep ethical, responsible journalism alive. As Councilman Rosendahl said, that is how the public can get its information, and without it, yeah, it's all the political consultants that get to inform them, and we know how much we want that. But especially, we also want to let you know that Bill Rosendahl is going to get honored and roasted and toasted for our 100th anniversary. We are creating a special fund in his name that will support public affairs journalism, and this is because he actually took it upon himself as the president of the Press Club to revive it at a time when it was really suffering. So we hope you'll all be there. I believe it's April 25th. Is it the 25th? And finally, thank you all for giving us so much fodder to report on.
I'm good. Okay, good. Thank you.
All right. Well, if I'm in, if I'm in town, I will definitely be at that event honoring Mr. Rosendahl. Thank you. And again, let's give them a round of applause. They deserve it. And Christina, why did I know you were not going to speak? I just knew that you weren't going to say anything. I hope your sons are well. Okay, where are we now? I think it's time for Mr. Tom Labange. Mr. Labange, the floor is yours.
Let's have another hand for the Press Club of Los Angeles for all the good press and the real press. I'm giving you a little shout-out, but we have a special guest here from our sister city of Mumbai. Mumbai is our sister city for 45 years, and I'm very pleased to have one of the actors who portrayed in the movie Silver Linings Playbook here. We have Mr. Kerr right here. Welcome to Los Angeles, California. Let's give him a better hand, folks. It's only Tuesday. I'm here with Miriam Honeycutt, who is the chairperson of our sister city, of our chairperson of Mumbai, and in his work, we want this very special welcome to you and to your wife here, and the work that you've done to be in a movie. And also, what we see here, we saw a great television actor, a great theatrical actor, a great movie actor, Dick Van Dyke, that we all know, but I'm sure more people know your face for all the people in India who love film and Bollywood, and the connection, as you know, Mr. Krikorian, between Bollywood and Hollywood is so strong. The actor's journey has also made him immensely important to children. As his work as a professional actor and as his heart, he reached out and created opportunity for teaching disabled children at a special school in Mumbai. Mr. Kerr was invited to be the ambassador to India's largest organization that helps and reaches and works out with children, and I want to pronounce it correctly, the organization. Pratim, the ambassador of Pratim, which is a very important role. So I just wanted to welcome you here and thank you for coming here, and I'll, Ms. Honeycutt, thank you as well. And it's a great day to be in Los Angeles, and also, Mr. Kerr bestowed upon him the Dalai Lama Award in recognition for working with disadvantaged children of Los Angeles. And Madam Clerk, all this is to the record, that we have this special guest who is here in front of the city council, so I just want to really welcome you here. I want to say, "Ampar Kerr to the Los Angeles City Hall." Thank you very much. Please, go to the microphone.
Thank you. Well, it's a great honor for me to be part of this proclamation that's bestowed upon by L.A. City. The best part about cinema is that it doesn't have any barriers of language, of race, of, it only depends on pure emotions. And L.A. being the capital city of entertainment world, and Mumbai being the capital city of India, I think there's a great connection, and I think my work for children and the honor that I'm being given for my work for children is much more important to me than 460 films that I've done in the last 29 years of my career. That's what is important to me, and I'm thankful to all of you for this great honor. And it also, I'm thankful to my people in India for making my dream come true of being in the same frame as Robert De Niro. I think that's fantastic, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much. You gotta tell Bobby De Niro we said hello when you see him next time. Hey, Miriam Honeycutt.
The biggest honor that was given to me by a cast member in Silver Linings Playbook, it said, he was introduced, I was introduced to Mr. Robert De Niro as Robert De Niro of India. So I thought that was very telling.
That's very special. We have Miriam Honeycutt here, who's the chairperson of our, of our very special Mumbai sister city.
Well, thank you. He is our brand ambassador of sister city program, and without Tom, I don't know, we'd all be like scattered here and there. So thank you for putting us all together.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Anupam Kher. We are so honored to have you here and for you to accept this and be a part of our sister city, and he is going to be our brand ambassador of the L.A. Mumbai Sister City to bring the Bollywood and Hollywood connection together. So thank you very much.
Thank you very, and, Mr. President, as we close, I would like to ask the members of the sister city and our special guests, including Kathy and Cliffy right there from Mitchell Torita Street in Silver Lake, all our guests here from Mumbai, give them a big hand there, and welcome to Los Angeles City Hall.
Welcome and congratulations.
Come here.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we're gonna go to item 24. I have cards from the public on this. I have Sean Murphy and Mr. John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org. Just wait a minute, Sean.
Yeah, I am, I know.
Let the traffic clear. We wanna, we wanna be able to hear you.
No, he did not.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes, the Expo line, that is an item for item 24. It's a good item. I hope they work on it to get a better safety. Thank you.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Go check out our endorsements. This is number 24. This concerns another vacating of Grand Avenue between Second Street and Cascauska Way. But what this does actually is it waives all the SEQA requirements. I have been on this for quite some time, where we give away land. We should not be giving away land. They don't do it in other cities. I've talked to this, talked about it with Mr. Labange. I appreciate his position, but I like to say, John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org. Stay tuned for public comment. It's gonna be exciting.
Okay, no speakers on the queue. Let us open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, now we'll go to item one. I have cards, Donna Peirman, Sean again, Mr. Murphy, Dow House Dude, and Mr. Walsh. We start off with Ms. Peirman.
Yeah, I'd like to say on the, anything with the elections and what it costs, I'd like to see a lot more transparency, so we can see exactly what everything costs. Most of these things, it seems to be done, the public never even knows exactly what is spent anywhere, and it's getting to the point where we've got to be a lot, it should be the city council working with the Los Angeles instead of just their own kingdom. So I'd like to see a lot more transparency and exactly know what is spent in all the different type of directions, and open up Van Nuys video conferencing. It's about time. Thank you.
Mr. Murphy.
Yeah, the same thing. I agree with this item. Thank you.
Mr. Dude, followed by Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh.
I agree to disagree, because I'm a, I am a, what do you call it, official writing candidate, but the way you run the ballots, my name will probably not appear there, and I'm gonna sue the city. You better do things right. You better write, make sure that people know there are people like me that they can vote for. Don't hide your opponents that can give you a real hard fight. In Venice Beach, I am well-known, and I know...
Mr. President, this really isn't about the fees and bonds for recounts in connection with city elections.
I know. It's about being transparent, right, on the election, and I want transparency.
It's regarding the fees and bonds for recounts.
Oh, yeah. I spent $300 getting permission to run my campaign. I only spent $500 so far, and I can give you a run for your money. I really can. You know, you don't need millions of dollars telling each other you're a crook.
Mr. Dude, I'm giving you a lot of latitude on this one. No, okay. John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Please go to our website for our endorsements. You'll see the... You'll see the new pope there. This concerns, again, recounts is what it concerns. Now, I don't think, I would like, I don't think we've had an official recount in this city in quite some time. Recounts as they were originally don't exist. And I mean, this is all done by computer. So what it means is they recomputerize. They no longer hand count at all. Now, that, incidentally, it's much easier to steal an election by computer than it is in the old days when they broke open the, when they threw the boxes of ballots into the, into the, into the lake in Chicago so that our friend Kennedy could win. What we think, more bonds, more fees, more recounts, we're not going to need a recount on Prop A because the vote is going to be no.
Stay on the subject, stay on the subject, Mr. Walsh. You can do that in general public comment.
I mean, there's a thread there, HollywoodHighlands.org. Mr. Garcetti absent again.
Okay, let's vote on this item. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
And Mr. President, there's a request for that item to go forth with.
Without objection. Okay, now we'll go to item 20. Donna Pearman again, Mr. Dude, and John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org. This is item 20. Okay, Mr. Walsh passes. So Donna Pearman.
Yeah, okay. I haven't written down yet. Okay, sorry. Okay, here we go. It shows, seems a lot of love and money to be spending on this workforce investment. While I do agree that I like to have, be able to have dislocated workers, be able to have a, you know, more training and more work, it seems to me strange that we're spending a lot of money like this when we're always seem, seems to be going after city employees. So I don't, seems to me that, I, also, I don't know exactly what jobs these are on dislocated workers. Are these jobs that are going to be something that is a real career? That some that these people are going to be keeping forever? Or are these jobs something that's just a temporary, short-term shovel-ready job? And I have a feeling that these are, they're dislocating these workers to a job that won't really exist into the future, and there's not really going to be anything that's worthwhile. And so before we spend, you know, I don't know where the money is coming from, but before we spend any money on these things, we need to know that these jobs are worthwhile jobs. And two, I don't believe that we should go after this, we should stop saying that public employees, they have to sacrifice, sacrifice, sacrifice on one end, and then in the other end, you're giving money to other type of employees that is private industry, so, most probably private industry, so. And reopen Van Nuys video conferencing. I'm Donna.
She is not on this item.
Stay on the subject.
Stay on the subject is, let's have a lot more transparency. I want to know exactly what this is because I'm tired of everything being passed without knowing exactly anything about it, so.
Okay, Mr. Dude.
Oh, yeah, fast response. I have a motto for that. They're never there when you need them. They're always there when you don't need them. What is it called? The LAPD.
Mr. Dude, this, this is nothing, this is not about the LAPD.
It's about responding, right?
It's, Mr. City Attorney, help him out a little bit.
This is regarding a grant of $800,000 in the Workforce Investment Act Rapid Response.
The response time is not pertaining to the police.
Oh, I pass.
Okay, thank you. All right, members, let's prepare to vote on this item. There are no speakers in the queue or on the queue. So let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. Mr. Keretz, you called item eight special? I know there are people that put in cards, but the public comment period, I mean, that requirement has been filled, fulfilled. So, Mr. Keretz.
Yes, I'd like to move the Personnel Committee version of the report. The committee approved an ordinance that included all, included all the concerns that were raised in the AGE Committee Report. So I'd like to receive and file that report and approve the Personnel and Animal Welfare Committee Report.
Okay, Mr. Zai.
That's something that we want to move forward with, but I'd like to, if we could, Mr. Keretz, have City Attorney come up and explain exactly what we're doing with this new ordinance.
City Attorney, please come forward.
And, colleagues, this deals with the waste, fraud, and abuse. The Controller has requested that we tighten the rules on waste, fraud, and abuse along with the Ethics Committee. We could have Ethics Commission come up also, Ethics Commission. Don't be shy back there. The issue is waste, fraud, and abuse, and how we need to establish a process and a procedure to make sure that it's documented properly and investigations are carried out properly. While we have a hotline, while we have a website, we have investigations, we need to define exactly what it is and how it's going to be handled, and also additional training for new hirees and existing city personnel that define this waste, fraud, and abuse. So if we could have between the City Attorney's Office and Ethics Commission describe exactly what we're doing with this new ordinance.
Good morning, councilmembers. Deputy City Attorney Renee Stottle. The ordinance before you amends certain provisions of the Administrative Code relating to the Controller's Fraud, Waste, and Abuse Unit. It restricts the reporting requirement, requiring all departments to report fraud, waste, and abuse to the Controller's Fraud, Waste, and Abuse Unit and to the Ethics Commission within 10 days of discovery of information that implicates those matters. The ordinance defines what fraud, waste, and abuse for purposes of the reporting requirement is. The ordinance also requires all full-time employees to complete fraud awareness training at the time of hiring and every two years thereafter. The training would be an online training provided and coordinated by the Personnel Department. Failure to complete the training would subject the employee to potential penalties under the city's ethics ordinance.
Thank you. So currently, the code expects that they report. Well, now it's going to be mandated and required mandatory that they report.
That's correct.
And this is a result of some of the issues that we've had with city employees and some of the departments that have been published in the news.
That's my understanding.
Okay. Ethics.
Good morning, Heather Holt for the Ethics Commission. Yes, I'm sorry, was I interrupting?
I was just going to say, since ethics and waste, fraud, and abuse and the Controller's Office, there's a coordinated effort. I just wanted to make sure that that's all part of this.
Yes, absolutely. We have had ongoing communication between our office and the Controller's Office regarding calls that come into both of our separate hotlines. We have a hotline that is mandated by the Charter and addresses the issues that fall within our jurisdiction, which is campaign financing, lobbying, and governmental ethics issues. There is sometimes some crossover between the calls that come in on one hotline and the calls that should be handled by a different agency. So we have regular coordinated meetings where we share relevant information with each other in order to move forward on those issues.
So a cooperative relationship between ethics and Controller's Office.
Yes.
To maybe, hopefully, eliminate waste, fraud, and abuse because it's the taxpayers' dollars that we're concerned with and getting the services done for the people of Los Angeles.
Yes, that is the goal.
Is there any additional information or any additional modifications you believe necessary, or is this going to work for the ethics? And I hope, is there someone here from Controller's Office? If so, if they could come forward. I just want to make sure we're tight with what we're doing with this.
Yes, we don't have any suggested changes. We, as the City Attorney's Office mentioned, we will be involved in enforcing failure to take a training because it falls within the, or it would be added to the governmental ethics ordinance. That does have some budgetary implications for us, but we think that the ordinance as drafted is, is good.
Great. And from the Controller's Office, and I see our investigators here from the Controller's Office, just to make sure that we've got everything covered as we've had through this through two committees, and now we're here to have this move forward as the ordinance. Any comments from the Controller's Office?
No, the ordinance addresses all issues, all concern. Previously, it was up to the departments to report to us. Now it make it as a requirement for them to report, so it would add also concern that we had previously.
So this should hopefully tighten the ship, make sure that the employees are doing right for the people who are paying the taxes and getting those services done in the proper fashion. If not, there'll be consequences between the Controller's Office, ethics, and the process that follows that.
That's correct.
So, colleagues, I would ask that we approve this. Item A with the movement, as we've heard from my colleague, Mr. Keretz, put this into place, and then hopefully we can make some improvements in some of the situations that have taken place in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Zai. Mr. Kukorion.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm unclear on what the sanctions are for violation of this. If an employee fails to report something that is later determined to be wasteful, what sanctions does that include? Would that include a criminal sanction for violation of the Ethics Code?
The, the reporting requirement itself is a requirement for departments and appointed offices to report. So the primary requirement applies to the general managers of those departments. And discipline would primarily be in the realm of the mayor's office at that point for the general managers.
Okay.
In terms of the training requirement, the possible, because it's being added to the ethics ordinance, if an employee fails to take the training, the potential penalties, as with all penalties in the ethics ordinance, are potential discipline, administrative penalties, or even potential criminal or civil liability.
But, but the duty to report resides with the general manager, not with the individual employees?
That's right.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Goran, thank you. To the team at the center table, thank you. There's no other speakers on the queue. So we should open the roll on this, correct?
Yes, sir.
Close the roll.
Yes, sir.
Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
13 ayes. Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to call on public comment at this time. For those of you in public comment, we'll call on you right now. Brent Anderson. Mr. Anderson, you're first. Donna Pearman, you're next, followed by, I'm going to ask the sergeants for the spelling on this here. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning, Mr. President, honorable councilmembers. I'm here today to ask your consideration to maybe look at a, a problem of some sort that I feel that I am coming in on. I've been trying to get an issue with the Parking Violations Bureau to, to, to fix a problem that I was, I didn't really break the rule, but it was something that could be adjusted through them. And I've been getting mail back from the mayor's office, from Angie Jimenez, stating that the Public Violations Bureau has become very tough and quite unpleasant to work with. And this is out of our constituents' office, out of the mayor's office. I've been asked, Mr. Huesar's constituent, to ask if I could get further assistance. But every time that they came up with a reason, I gave them an answer, and the Parking Violation Bureau came up with another, another reason to keep the violations in play. At this time, I would like to ask if maybe you could review the process because I believe that it was a smack in the face when I told them that I would be here, and Roseanne Beecham, which was the examiner who talked with me, laughed at me when I said that I would come here and ask the council for your help. So I consider this a slap in our dignitaries' face, and I would like to ask for your assistance.
Thank you very much. What we're going to do is, Susie Jack here is the deputy mayor, is going to meet you at the ropes and just take the information down. We can adjudicate it, but we can find out information and then let them do what's right or wrong.
Thank you very much.
To the ropes to your right. Thank you, sir. Ms. Pearlman.
So we all know it's Pearman. Donna Pearman, vote for Eric Garcetti for mayor. And if you believe in democracy, let's open communication with Van Nuys video conferencing so they can hear the speakers in the valley. Also, Donna Pearman, Derek Qualeco Fan Club. I advise the people should leave a will so you won't bring family division, hardship unnecessary, sorrow for the surviving benefactors, discourse with children, make it easy to deal with sorrow or losing loved ones. So people out there, leave a will. Back to city. Our city council has not shown to have spent previous taxes well, so why should they spend this half on sales tax any better? Vote no on Prop A. It's not for essentials, it's for pet projects for the city council, and has no sunset clause. It will never end. So people know that, it will never end. Vote for Joyce Pearson for District 3. She always been for the valley with secession of the valley. She believes in Van Nuys video conferencing. You don't like City Hall, try Anchor Patel for Controller. How about, how can Councilwoman Jan Perry say she's for the San Fernando Valley after voting to close Van Nuys video conferencing? Doesn't add up. She's for downtown. City council needs to reopen video conferencing in Van Nuys, it's only, shows how it feels about the valley. We always get the short end of the stick. Only one running for mayor that, the mayor that cared was Eric Garcetti, who is the one who closed the city contracts, getting city employees to pay for the part of their health care. It was up to him. Villa Bagosa did not close those deals. It was Eric Garcetti that closed those deals. So I know a good person when I see it, and I know who would run the city best. And eyes up right there on CD 13, Eric Garcetti. Thank you.
Next, Sean Murphy. Sean, I want you to go back to St. Charles on your penmanship. Thank you very much.
Yeah. I'm sorry it's been on the news so much. It should get, it should be bare from here on out. Vote for, vote for the candidate of your choice. Get out and vote. I want to tell my Spanish fans, get out and vote. Get out and vote. Select your choices and vote. I'm, I'm very angry at Washington, D.C. They ought to get their act together. We're not taking any budget cuts. Tell Washington, D.C. to get their act together.
Thank you, Sean Murphy. Mr. Juan Dude. Mr. Juan Dude. Juan Dude is not here. We'll hold the card. Antonio Ramirez. Antonio Ramirez, followed by Daniel Gus, is that correct, Daniel?
I would like to see Francis G. Smith, a slumlord in Los Angeles, who owns property at 245 South Lucas Avenue, Los Angeles, California, 90026, arrested and sanctioned. She hires and rents out to criminal illegal aliens and gangbangers, and they are Carmen Santiago Roberto and the tenants who are committing crimes. They are apartment 107, apartment 109, apartment 211, apartment 218, and that's Vicky, and apartment 202, that's Vicky Cooper, and apartment 414, Alicia Limas, and apartment unknown with the license plate numbers four, B as in boy, Y as in yellow, H as in hairy, 581, and apartment 311 at Al. And having said that, Rampart has miserably failed to arrest and detain or interrogate or investigate any of the crimes committed against legal law-abiding citizens, including military veterans, et cetera. And I would like to go ahead and name them. They are Chaparro I, Villanueva V, Espinoza P, Gutierrez J, Sergeant Gillen P, Sergeant Sanchez J, Sergeant Min J, and Sergeant M. Gamble, and Sergeant Williams, and Detective Elder J. Crimes are not being deterred, crimes are not being prevented. You have to go to an outside agency to get any police protection. And I met these wonderful officers, and they both happen to be African-American. That was Sergeant Ron Johnson and Sergeant Kay Green. I want to thank these lovely gentlemen for taking the time to listen to our complaints and filing these reports that should have been done by Rampart that were not. And what they did was, they took it upon them to file these reports for us and transfer it to the city attorney who's slacking off and sitting off on his asses. And the LAPD, and again, Kukorion, you should be criminally sacked.
All right. Daniel Gus, Daniel.
Good morning. Some thoughts on the upcoming election. Just a quick note, Eric Garcetti knows, I think he's a good guy, but I have, for more than a year, tried to get a block on North Ardmore with all sorts of intact, unlicensed dogs. on North Ardmore with all sorts of intact, unlicensed dogs fixed. And with all due respect, you're a nice man, but your office just doesn't respond. And I'm really disappointed a year later that, you know, it's just a real disappointment in Mr. Garcetti's office. Anyway, but I want to talk about positive things. Left and right, Dennis Zine keeps getting these amazing endorsements for Controller. Jimmy Delshad, the former mayor of Beverly Hills, the LAX Police Officers Association, Engineers and Architects Association, the Valley Alliance of Neighborhood Councils, they all endorse Dennis Zine for Controller, as I do. Most importantly, the League of Humane Voters endorses Dennis Zine for Controller. He helped us get rid of Ed Boakes, and he's a very accessible council member for the humane community. And of course, John Walsh endorses Dennis Zine for Controller. Let's get him in during the primary. We do need, we do need, come on, no heckling, he's a good man. We do need a fresh mind in the mayor's office. I would love to see Kevin James there. He's the opposite of Antonio Villarosa. If you're tired of the same old, we need a fresh mind in the mayor's office, the voice of experience with Dennis Zine in the Controller's Office. I'd like to see Mike Bonin replace Mr. Rosendahl. Jose Segala for CD 13. He's not a carpetbagger like Mitch O'Farrell, who's been living in the district for five months. Mr. Kretz and I tend to disagree on things, but he's a good man. I hope we bring Mr. Kretz back here and send Jeff Ebstein to Sacramento sooner or later. We got to get this thing turned around. But again, Kevin James for mayor, Dennis Zine for Controller. If you have a pet, if you're a rescuer, if you care about animals, Dennis Zine, man, he's got the answers, and I appreciate everything. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Juan Dude is returned. I'm calling Mr. Juan Dude.
Yeah, I was getting Dick Van Dyke's signature, and I did. He goes, I don't know what I'm signing. I said, I just want your autograph. I want to be like you when I grow up. I want to be a real, I can't say the word, right? I gotta say Van Dyke. I can say Dick Van Dyke, can I? Okay. I told him that. I want to be like you, a real Van Dyke. Okay, you can imagine. Anyway, it's all about homelessness. I told him, how come we made such a huge industry out of homelessness? Dick, you're out there feeding the homeless. Why don't we end homelessness? Hello? Hey, excuse me, guys. Are you listening?
Mr. Dude, please address the chair. Thank you.
Who are these guys? Do they belong here?
I want to hear what you have to say right now. Your clock is running.
I say we need to create a parallel system where we end homelessness, and if you're rich, you can have your reward, you can go build your castle, but don't keep everybody homeless. Don't keep taking our taxes and giving nothing back. Hello? Get smart. We're really stupid right now. Or we're playing stupid so we can keep the power and the money and the limousines and the rides and going to the Berlin Wall. You remember that one, right? You were showing a chunk of the Berlin Wall when I met you. But I didn't act like a real Van Dyke. All right?
Thank you. Mr. Juarez here. Mr. Juarez. No, Mr. Juarez, I do have a card without a name on it. I do have yours. I was saving the best for last. Sit down, Mr. Walsh. Okay, we have a no-name card of general public comment from Skid Row. Please come forward and state your name when you speak. Thank you.
I know you're not going to take this, because you can't relate to, as he was talking about homelessness. Can't wait to try to plead my case about homelessness, but try to make you see us as human beings. It's not working, you know? Maybe I need to just reintroduce you to my race of people, my culture, who are 99.9% on Skid Row. You're not seeing the same thing that I'm seeing. What would you do if they were trying to kill your people again? It's like a genocide. We're not doing this to ourselves. This is the government. You look into the raggedy clothes, the dirty, whatever you think we're doing. I don't see this. I see, and you may not be able to rate to this, I see my Billy Holidays. I see my Dr. Charles Drew. I see my Frederick Douglass is down on Skid Row. I see my Paul Lawrence Dunbar is my Earth and Kids, my Dorothy Dandriches. I see real people down there. No one is trying to relate to us. You have your two cars, you have your summer homes, and we see you have over 20 million. Now, we're a very generous country. Over 20 million illegals in this country, but American soldiers, someone was sleeping on the street. I need to reintroduce you to my black people down there. You need to know the Diana Carols, the Sidney Poitiers. I see Lou Rowe. I see Oz. This is where once we came from. Otis Redding.
Mr. John Walsh, last card following this speaker. Public comment is closed.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. For ID purposes, anybody but Garcetti for mayor just showed up during public comments. He had no reason to be here earlier. Prop A, vote no. These commercials just came out. They say that if you vote against Prop A, your house is going to burn down. You got Charlie Beck on there, who is, who has about as much popularity in the African-American community as the AIDS virus. And he's the one you want to convince the minorities to vote for. Okay, third rape. Third rape in eight days in Hollywood. Now, I asked everybody up here, now, he doesn't give a damn, Garcetti, and I understand this woman was urinated on after she was raped. This is from Crime Mapping LA. I like to defend Mr. Zine. His opponents have been attacking him, saying he's a double-dipper. He's not a double-dipper. There's no such thing as a double-dipper. He worked for 33 years as a cop, and he earned his pension. He saved us. He's working here, and he earns his money. I'm tired of these right-wing, "double-dipper." We don't ah, ah. These are people who didn't have it on the ball enough to get a pension, who didn't, a half worked. I'm telling you right now, if I don't show up for two meetings in a row at this microphone, that means I'm missing. And I'm asking Rosendahl, if I'm missing, to have the LAPD check the water tank on top of City Hall. I think you'll find me in there, and it wasn't an accident. I didn't slip and fall. Okay? I mean, that's the way we're, HollywoodHighlands.org.
That completes public comment for this day. Public comment is required by law. We thank those speakers. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Item 21, call Special Black Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti, we have 21. Are we ready for 21? We have some cards.
Sure, we can go ahead and take the cards first.
Okay. 21. Juan Dude, followed by Philip Starr, Mr. Villalobos, Joseph Chirris, forgive me if that's wrong, as well as Vera, Herman Vera. Thank you. Juan, your turn. Juan, right to the microphone.
Well, I'm just trying to see. I think I'm going to pass on this one.
Thank you, Juan, and I appreciate your pass. And now I'd like to call on those speakers who filled out a card. Mr. Villalobos, Mr. Starr, Mr. Herman Vern, as well as Joseph Chicas. Thank you. State your name.
Mr. Garcetti, good morning, everybody. My name is Blas Villalobos. I am the Community Programs Manager for U.S. Vets here in L.A., and I want to support Mr. Garcetti's Veterans Affairs position. I believe, and we all know, that a lot of veterans are coming back in the near future. We have just about 33,000 veterans who are going to be coming back from Afghanistan in the next year. There are a lot of great agencies here in the city of L.A. that are providing services to these veterans, veterans who are experiencing homelessness, mental health issues, unemployment issues, other physical issues such as TBI. And having someone within our city's leadership who can coordinate all these services so that we're not duplicating services will be essential. There are a lot of services that are being provided right now. One of the great examples will be Patriot Call. A lot of very good agencies will be housed out of there, who will be providing services for the veterans and their families. But once again, having someone within our leadership who can coordinate all these efforts, and who can provide services to the veterans, and have a good resource for them when they come back and their families, will be absolutely essential. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is Mr. Starr.
Hello, I'm Philip Starr. I'm the director at the Hollywood Worksource Center, and we have funding and programs through Council 1290 funds and from the State Employment Training Panel to do veterans' training programs in health care and in executive protection. So we have veterans come to our center all the time for services, but there's many, we don't have all the services they need, we don't have all the programs they need. And it would be so helpful to have someone dedicated at the city where their primary job, their sole job would be to advocate for veterans and coordinate services. Veterans get, in our experience, veterans sometimes get overwhelmed, especially, we work a lot with recently separated veterans. Civilian life is very different than military life. They come out. We're not very organized in civilian life. And if there is someone there that can be organized and advocate in behalf of veterans and make sure that all services are available to those veterans, it will have a real impact in their life. Our focus is economic security. We're there to help people get jobs. That's what we do best, but we need a coordinator whose passion is not only economic security, but all areas that meet the veterans' needs. So I strongly advocate this motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, council members. Joseph Chicas. Councilman Garcetti, I just want to thank you for your leadership on this initiative. It couldn't have come at a better time, at a better point in time for our veterans while the wars are winding down. You know, as Blas and my colleagues here have mentioned before in the past, we have a very vibrant and very energetic veteran service community here in Los Angeles. It's growing, it's organizing. We're beginning to build systems to really transform conditions for our veterans. However, what we're missing is real leadership from our city and from our county when it comes to really helping us to coordinate our services in a way that's cost-effective for us, the providers, and for our city. And so I think it's perfect that this veteran service coordinator position is now coming into the big picture. And I just encourage the city council, please consider this initiative and what it can bring to our veterans. I think it really creates that safety net for our veterans that's really missing right now. And it's an important first step, but it's one step of many that need to happen down the line. I think eventually we'd love to see this housed in the mayor's office, where it can be a sustainable initiative and deliver services for our veterans, and really show the rest of our city and the rest of our nation that we're really serious about veterans' issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, Mr. Herman Vern.
Yes, good morning. My name is Arnan Ved. I'm the president and CEO of Public Council. Want to start by thanking council member Rosendahl and Garcetti for their leadership in enabling organizations like Public Council and many others to stand up for our veterans day in and day out and advocate for them. The city of Los Angeles really has been exerting leadership on this issue, and I think that this item is another chance for the city of Los Angeles to lead, and that's why we are incredibly supportive of it. It's an important opportune concept for several reasons. It's important because organizations like USC, their School of Social Work, are creating the next generation of leaders, of social workers. They need opportunities to get involved. The city of L.A. can give them those opportunities, and we've worked with many of their social workers on our staff to get them involved. So that is, I think, an important part of the puzzle there. It's timely because the federal government is putting more money into veterans' issues. Foundations like United Way are putting more money into veterans' issues. And as my colleagues at USC and U.S. Vets have said, too many organizations are running around not knowing what others are doing. And I think that that's something that we have to solve. For example, at Public Council, we have a new program called Just One. What we want to do is go to every human resources department and say, hire one veteran. Here are the advantages in terms of workers' comp. Here are the tax advantages. We want to work with you to just hire one. So many other groups are doing the same thing. There should be someone coordinating that work, coordinating the VASH vouchers, coordinating everything here in the city. And I echo my colleagues' suggestion respectfully, that that position eventually reside in the mayor's office. We think that that's a good idea as well. So I just want to close by thanking the council members, Rosendahl and Garcetti, again, and all of you for supporting this work. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That completes the public comment card. Mr. Garcetti, just for a technical, you're not a veteran yet until you complete your service. You're active.
I'm active right now, you're correct. Active in the reserve component right now.
You're not a veteran yet, but you're looking out for the
No, vets are people who serve every single day, too. We have people who are still in active service who have served abroad.
Okay, I just want to get the technicality. Mr. Garcetti, please.
Thank you very much. And I want to thank the great speakers that we had who have worked very hard on this. Blas, Joseph, Phil, Arnan, and the growing community here that is looking at making sure that the 330,000 veterans that live in L.A. County, about 10% of which are unemployed, nearly 12% of which are homeless, finally have a seat at the table here. In the city of L.A., we've oftentimes said, well, certain things aren't under our jurisdiction. We shouldn't do anything. We know, though, that the greatest sacrifices in the recent wars were given by the city of Los Angeles and veterans who come from the city, more than any city even, including New York in the United States. And with the winding down of the wars in Iraq and Afghanistan, the L.A. Veterans Collaborative reports that, as was stated, nearly 30,000 new veterans by 2014 are expected to return home to California, to Southern California, a majority of them. Number of efforts that are underway today begins with making sure that we start with workforce coordinator, somebody who will get jobs for veterans as they come back. I was appalled to learn the statistic in my own district that of the folks that are going to Los Angeles City College who are veterans, half of them are homeless. Now, they may not be sleeping under an overpass, but they're living in a car, or they're crashing on a friend's couch, they're living in a storage unit, or some other way. That cannot be the way that we welcome home our veterans. And now, more than ever before, the city needs to think strategically about addressing the needs of its veterans' population. I want to thank Mr. Rosendahl, who is a veteran, who joined with me on this, and this council who, thank you. Thank you for the support this council has shown as well. And colleagues, this is with existing funds. The Workforce Investment Board has stepped up. Michael Wynn, who is here with us today himself, a veteran, who will be the point person in this position, looking at what we can do to provide jobs to veterans and establishing metrics in our Worksource Centers so that people will have to serve veterans directly. 10%, is that correct? 10%. And I agree with what was stated by our speakers, that this is a first step. I think ideally, we would have a mayor's office of Veterans Affairs. Many cities have that. And we don't, as I said in council, I'm sorry, in committee, want to replicate what's out there. We don't want to create a different bureaucracy where the county has, and the federal government and the state has programs. We want to sync up with them, co-locate with them, enhance them. Oftentimes, we get into government, we wonder, 20 years ago, why did we create three different entities doing the same thing? We're not looking to do something parallel. We're looking to do something unique that adds to the overall services that are given to our veterans. So I ask for your support today, colleagues, to create this veterans' coordinator position, to make sure that those who have sacrificed and served come back here with the same level of service and thanks from us. And nothing, no better way than making sure, especially in this city where we have such an amazing set of experts. I mean, USC Social, School of Social Work has the only veterans' program in the country. So we're well positioned to get them the mental health care they need while we're working on jobs, and while we're advocating for housing as well through VASH vouchers and other things from our Veterans Affairs. So today, we can make some history here in the city of Los Angeles. It is just the first step on a path of making sure there's full rehabilitation for all of our veterans. But we thank them for their service, and we thank you as well for your support today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti, and for your great service. Mr. Rosen- Mr. Rosendahl, veteran.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Eric, I want to thank you for doing this. You have shown, since I've known you as an elected, real passion and compassion for the homeless and for the veterans in particular. Your work right now in the military is real, and people need to respect and realize that. So this is great leadership on your part. I'd like the CAO to come up real quickly. I want to hear something from the CAO.
Community Development Department, Eric, great Irish, a great veteran of City Hall.
Yeah, that's right. And let me just make a couple of quick comments. Furtick at USC, the best there is. I've been working with him for many years as a social worker, and obviously, it matters. I just want people to understand that on this Prop. 21, which is a great motion, will assist veterans and their eligible spouses and dependents to access services and entitlements due them for their military service. Specialized military social workers with the Workforce Center, a permanent funding source. Folks, let me just tell you, these two wars now are worse than the Vietnam War. I know the Vietnam War. I saw eight or nine Vietnam vets a day. I know all about war, and I know what it does to people. These wars are worse because there's only 1% of the population engaged in these wars, not 100%. It's not across the board. And these young men and women go back and forth to Iraq and Afghanistan, two crazy places we shouldn't be in in the first place. But you can't turn off a military conflict like a light switch. It doesn't work that way. So these veterans are coming back in worse shape than the Vietnam era. We need to grab them by the hand and hold them close. We need to work with them. You know, I opened up the only transition house for veterans in Delray that the nation had three years ago. Now I admire both Diane Feinstein and Henry Waxman, who are stepping up to the plate. We have a new beginning at the veterans' property. And we actually have an event this Sunday, March 3, to talk about the deed of that VA property and that it is for veterans. So as a veteran from the Vietnam era and a social worker and an openly gay guy, I just want to say, I applaud what you're doing. Give us a quick thumbnail of where we're at, and I look forward to this becoming law.
This is Councilmember Greg Irish, interim general manager of CDD. I'm joined by Jaime Pacheco, who's my director of Workforce Development Services, and Michael Nguyen, who currently actually acts in the capacity of our veterans coordinator, but does that with performing other duties with other significant populations. As you said, council member, and of course, Mr. Garcetti is the author of these actions, very often our rhetoric about veterans doesn't match our actions, at least not on a national scale. This is a first. This is the first of what I'm hoping are many steps, and Mr. Garcetti's put us on the right path in terms of creating opportunities for vets to successfully reintegrate back into our community.
Right.
What it will do, again, is establish a coordinator, a full-time coordinator. Mr. Nguyen, being a former veteran himself, would be in that capacity, would serve in that capacity, to make sure that veterans have employment opportunities, those who make it possible for us to sleep soundly under the blanket of security and freedom every night. The other recommendations that Mr. Garcetti has proposed, I think, are very innovative. It talks about something that hasn't existed before. 10% of everyone we serve in terms of Workforce Development Services in our system will now be veterans. We'll make that a targeted population, and we'll report to you on the results of that 10%. It also creates an opportunity for us to expand the capacity of Worksource Centers in terms of their expertise. As you know, it's not limited, or it is limited. They don't have the expertise to deal with the myriad issues of veterans. We're going to try to get, create some sort of partnership with probably USC because they have the expertise in terms of their School of Social Work so that we can expand the capacity to deal with the problems that vets have in terms of securing employment services. So we think this is a first. We're appreciative of this, and we're hoping it will lead to a coordinated plan that the city can have within the mayor's office for Veterans Affairs throughout the city.
Great, and I want to, Mr. President, I want to thank Mr. Garcetti for his leadership on this. This makes a lot of sense. Every time I put my veterans' hat on, I go back to the war ever. You know, once a veteran, and once a person who appreciates war and appreciates it, you never, ever forget it. And every time I put this hat on, I think of all the men and women who have died serving their country. Every time I put the gay flag out, we've been there all the time, everywhere. Now, no one can say they don't know anybody who's gay because we are who we are, just another part of the population. So I love our country, and I got to tell you that this is a step in the right direction. Whoever becomes mayor should follow through with this, and I thank you, Eric, for your leadership on this.
Very good, Mr. Rosendahl. Thank you for your service. Mr. Zine.
Thank you. I also want to acknowledge my colleague, Mr. Garcetti, from the United States Navy Reserve, for having this come forward. I serve on the U.S. Army Advisory Board, and I know what it is to get the folks in the military, and then it seems to end. Then they leave the military, and then what happens? So they do a lot to escort them in, a lot of support, they do their time, and then they go back out to the civilian life, and it may be an opportunity, it may not be an opportunity. So it's a great opportunity to serve them, to give them some focus and some ability to get back in the civilian population because there's definite transition from the military when you're in combat to come back to civilian population. One thing that the police department had, and I don't know if any other departments have it, but they had a veterans coordinator, and I would suggest that we find out if there's any of those individuals have that expertise, and they could bring them in the fold, and I totally support this, but if we've got people who are working in that, and the PD had one who was strictly involved in the military, folks, we need to explore our 39 departments and see if any departments have anyone in that capacity. We can then tap into that environment, go with this, and maybe those folks can help augment what you're trying to do to help our veterans. But the man retired, and I don't know if they replaced him, but he was, his full-time responsibility was to help the military folks, and he was part of the Los Angeles Police Department. So it just gave me the idea to say, let's check those departments. If they've got somebody in that capacity, tap their knowledge, their resources, and go forward with this. This is obviously critical, and it's very important. But what we do is we do everything we can to recruit in the civilian population to the volunteer military, and then it seems they do their time, they do their service, and then after that, they're going into civilian life, and there doesn't seem to be a bad transition that they need to have. We need to establish that, and this city of the angels hopefully will be forward with that. So congratulations. Eric, another great idea to help those folks that have done so much, sacrificed their time, their families, to protect our freedoms and liberties. We need to recognize and help them out when they come back to civilian life. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Kokorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is one of those common sense ideas that really has the potential to have great impact for our city, for our economy, and especially for those who have served our country so well and so faithfully. And I just want to thank Mr. Garcetti for bringing this forward. You know, it's a sad fact that in this country, if you're a veteran, you're more likely to be homeless than if you're not a veteran. 40% of homeless men have served time in the military, and that's more than their population, more than their percentage in the overall population. That's a shameful fact that this country has to deal with. And I applaud President Obama for his goal of trying to end homelessness among veterans by 2015, and we've made progress, but we have so much further to go. And at this rate, we're not going to meet that goal. So we need to do more. We need to do more in this city to assist the president in that goal, and I thank Mr. Garcetti for doing that. But on the other side of the equation, I mean, certainly, we want to help address the problem of veteran homelessness, but the other side of that equation is how much veterans have to offer this city. The folks are coming home from military service with the best job skills imaginable, with the kinds of technical training that we need to create the economies of the 21st century here, the industries of the 21st century in Los Angeles. This is an incredible resource that we have available that we're not sufficiently tapping into. And having, you know, a veteran affairs coordinator who can help us to develop an economic strategy that encompasses veterans, I think is going to make a world of difference in creating a sense of entrepreneurship here and harnessing those skills, harnessing that great training that our veterans have received and making it work for the future of the city of Los Angeles. So I stand strongly in support of this and congratulate and applaud Mr. Garcetti for his leadership in bringing this through.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Garcetti, to close, I also want to say a friendly amendment that we ask ourselves to identify a staff member for liaison. I know Isaac Burks, a Marine, is my guy, and each of us have someone in our office who could help facilitate this. Mr. Garcetti, to close.
No, I think everybody said it correctly. Let's vote.
All right. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Fourth with on that one. Fourth with, thank you.
22 as well? We have fourth with on 20 and 22, and if we don't mind, I think staff talked to you, but if we can take 28 out of 22, thank you.
Special deputy for the Hollywood Chamber, Colm Mertz.
Good morning. I just wanted to thank
Nicole, introduce yourself.
Sorry, Nicole Chahanian with the Hollywood Chamber of Power.
A great representative for the Hollywood Chamber that you are, Nicole.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to come here this morning and thank you guys for considering this item. It's been a long time coming, and we're really excited about the prospect of having free filming for pilots here. We think it's great to keep L.A. as the entertainment capital of the world, and we'll bring jobs back to our great city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker would be Ed Duffy, Teamsters Local 399. Congratulations on all your work Monday night, Ed.
Oh, thank you.
Without the Teamsters, they don't make the movies.
I appreciate that. I'm going to read this because I wrote it very quickly, and I don't want to go over time. My name's Ed Duffy. I'm a business agent for Teamsters Local 399, who represents drivers, location managers, casting directors, and others working in the entertainment industry. Before that, I was a location manager for almost 30 years, right here in Los Angeles. In these economically competitive times for the entertainment industry in our state and the tremendous job losses we're suffering through due to incentives offered by other states and countries, we appreciate Councilman Garcetti's and the Jobs and Business Committee recommendations concerning waiving pilot and first-year series city fees. It sends a message to the industry and city that the council realizes the importance of retaining or bringing back to L.A. the thousands of jobs we have lost. As most of you know, in the initial state incentives were passed, network drama series were not included because the majority of that work was here. At the time, we were targeting cable TV and feature work, which is what we were losing at a rapid rate. Since then, California film and TV incentives lottery system is able to retain some of that cable and feature work. We've lost tremendous amount of TV network dramas. As network pilots and series are being shot in other states and countries, and as our current series grow older and are met with cancellation, they are being slowly replaced by our dramas from such locations as New York, Atlanta, South Carolina, who offer incentives both from the state and local cities. It goes without saying that much of Southern California's economy depends on the entertainment industry in one way or the another, from tourism to dry cleaners to lumberyards to caterers and countless support companies and vendors that rely on the sector for their livelihood. I also appreciate and thank all the council members that I've talked to and worked with who desire to look for every opportunity to keep Los Angeles film-friendly, competitive, and are committed to keeping these jobs in Los Angeles where they belong.
Thank you, Ed. Good job, Ed Duffy. Next speaker would be Doug Arsonot, ViCA Valley Industry and Commerce Association. Over 50 years, started with Business Community and the Department of Water and Power some 50 years ago.
Thank you. Thank you, council members. My name is Doug Arsonot of the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, representing more than 380 businesses in the city, including studios, vendors, and small businesses that rely on the Los Angeles-based television industry. The ViCA Entertainment Committee unanimously supported waiving the city's permitting fees for television pilots and their series' first-year production. Even as runaway production occurred over the past decade, television pilot filming in L.A. remained constant, historically surpassing an 80% market share. This lion's share of pilot production has translated into our city maintaining the resulting television series, drew their need for location consistency and generating millions, hundreds of millions of dollars for our city economy. However, in recent years, there's been a drastic reduction in pilot filming and the loss of resulting series, dropping down to 51% last year with only 29% of drama pilots. Clearly, something must be done to hedge the tide of runaway pilot production. The motion for you today would cost the city only between $107,000 and $231,000. Small amount of the city's $7.2 billion budget, while pilot filming contributes hundreds of millions of dollars into our city economy. Approving this proposal will send a clear message to the industry. The city is willing to work with them to maintain our city as the pilot capital of the world. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Juan Dude House.
The film industry, the catering industry, we all need to work, but we're not working in the right direction. You have one of the greediest, most corrupt cities. I found that out when I came here. You immediately took my car, you took everything I had, you threw me into more homelessness.
Mr. President, he's not talking about this item.
Thank you very much. You're not talking, either talk on the item or sit down.
The item is, we spend all these monies on entertainment. We don't put the money where we really need it, and you do have a corrupt city that's throwing businesses out. You need to reevaluate yourself. You need to revamp your system so we don't have a stupid city like we have. Greedy, stupid city. That's what we are.
And as Mr. Walsh comes out, I want to salute Melissa Patac for her great service to the city of Los Angeles and Motion Picture Association. Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Check out our endorsements. We're always in favor of more shooting in L.A., even in Hollywood. The problems created by shooting, they're worth putting up with. Remember, they started shooting in Hollywood, movies, in 1913. We know how to put up with the minor problems of shooting a movie in L.A., and it produces jobs. We are upset when the Academy has to take the orchestra and put them at Capitol Records because Cirque du Soleil took the sound system with them to Canada, and that's why they were in Capitol Records, the orchestra. But other than that, we are 100% in favor of more and more jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kretz is on the speaker, Mr. Garcetti's on the speaker.
Well, I thank Mr. Garcetti and everyone involved with this particular effort. There's no question that film and television is the underpinning of the economy in Los Angeles as it has been for decades. And there's also no question that runaway production threatens our entire economy and is possibly part of the reason that our recovery hasn't been as robust as it has been in some other places in the country. We literally have to do everything we can think of to incentivize film and television. I don't know that this is big dollars, but I think it sends an important message, and I ask everyone for an eye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Kretz. Mr. Garcetti, for the maker of the motion.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, I rise today to ask for your support for this very important policy. The reason we came up, Mr. Kokorian and I, and I forget who else seconded it, but I know Mr. Kokorian and I did, in 2006, 2007, L.A. was home to more than 60% of television drama pilots. Last year, that figure dropped to just 29%. And if you look at network one-hour drama pilots, I think we were down to two that filmed here last year. California in particular, Los Angeles, is the most significant cultural production center in the world. Thank you to Mr. Kokorian's work and others. At the state level, there's the beginning of a tax credit, which I think most of us believe needs to grow to keep more of that here. But what can we do right here in the city? We've been told that the entertainment industry generates about a half a million local jobs, but other cities and states and even countries are luring that production away. So today, we say we're going to fight back. We're going to fight to keep Hollywood where it belongs, here in Hollywood. And Mr. Walsh mentioned that this is the 100-year anniversary of when filming started in Hollywood, The Squaw Man, which was directed by a man with a funny name who had never directed even Traffic, who came out west, was going to do it in Arizona, but didn't like when he stopped on the train in Arizona, so he kept going. And when he got out here, Cecil Beadham Mill wired some guys back in the East Coast and said, will you send me $200,000 to film a long, a full-length motion picture, which had never been done before? He wanted to buy a little barn that was at the corner of Selma and Vine. They said okay, took a risk, and the rest is history. That film made about $450,000, sorry, for a $20,000 investment at the time. When you come here to L.A. to film a pilot, we want you to know that we want you here. And in fact, if you get picked up, we want you to stay here. And what's strategic about this is it's focusing on is that it's focusing on pilots, so that we increase our chances of landing the entire series that follows, turning a very small investment, just as they did with Cecil B. Demille's Squaw Man, into hundreds of middle-class jobs and pumping millions of dollars into our economy. With the help of the MPAA today, we also initiated legislation that would similarly look at the business tax burden. We're going to get to that in a second on broadcasting companies, but our work is not done. But I want to take a minute right now to recognize the human face of filming. Now, we just watched the Oscars, and many people think, "Well, you're talking about a star. You're talking about a director. You're talking about a producer." What we know about this industry is just, Mr. Duffy and his members, the folks that are around here, are the middle class of this city. It's those folks below the line, behind the scenes, and in the community. And so I want to celebrate somebody who's given a lot to the community here in Hollywood, who relies on the entertainment industry for his livelihood, who would be directly affected by what we do and his employees today, Chef Robert, who's been very patient this morning, by the way. Thank you for that. Chef Robert, who's here in the front row. If Channel 35 wants to pan, there's great chefs right here in the front row. Celebrated their 15th anniversary of Chef Robert catering this year. And in the past 15 years, Chef Robert has seen his business transform from just a single truck with a homemade commercial barbecue into one of the largest and most well-respected motion picture and television caterers in the world. And this landmark anniversary coincides with the opening of Chef Robert's catering's new 70,000-square-foot state-of-the-art commissary. He's never failed to recognize the importance of the Los Angeles film industry, which directly and indirectly employs over half a million Angelenos, and some of those are folks that are with him here today. It's a great feeling when you start a business. I think there's an even greater feeling when you know the employees that you bring along are helping to support their family. And he's a proud sponsor of Filmworks L.A. and a co-founder of the Motion Picture and Television Mobile Catering Association. Additionally, he works hard to support disadvantaged members of the workforce through his Chef Robert Class Act Bake Off and his support of the Chrisless Foundation. We were just talking about homelessness earlier. So Chef Robert and all the employees of Chef Robert Catering are an example of why we need to keep filming here in L.A. and why it's vital to approve this item today. So vote and support this. At the same time, I hope you'll join me in congratulating Chef Robert. We have a little thank you from the people of L.A. for you today. And also Ray Bidenos, who is here, who's the head of the Caterers Association as well, want to thank you for the great work that you've done. We ask for your support. Thank you, Mr. Kukorian, for being a great partner in this and a great leader on this issue. It's time to fight back. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. That completes the clue. I'm proud to say that, two years in a row, we honored 4th District, the city of Los Angeles, the Best Picture nominee. And last year, the artist won, and this year, Argo won. Both were made in Los Angeles. Both were key. That adds to your efforts, Mr. Kukorian and Mr. Garcetti. Very good, very good on that, all the way. 921 people for Argo, Warner Brothers Picture. Great job. They filmed Mr. Rosenthal at the Ontario Airport. But, you know, great job all the way. We want to keep people working here. Just want to ask the CLA-- Sure, just a second. I can give it to you right after we vote on this. And then, on the item, okay. I just wanted to ask, too, that the prairie departments, Mr. City Attorney and Madam Clerk, and also especially Recreation and Parks, be noticed to, as they do, fully cooperate. Because as a representative of Griffith Park, there's a lot of filming going on. That's a lot of jobs. Mr. Garcetti, please reintroduce for his close-up now. I want a close-up, Kenny, on that.
If you can reopen public comment for Chef Robert to take a couple of minutes to show the human face of this and what it's like to run his business. Chef Robert.
Hello, I'm Chef Robert. When my partner and I, Ray, my husband, partner in life, opened up the company 15 years ago, at first, I have to admit, having been raised in Northern California, it took me 10 years to get the giants out of my system, and now I bleed Dodger blue.
All right, good job.
But this is an extremely important initiative. As you know, I forewant to listen to some of the commentary, but the backdrop, the fabric, some of the behind-the-scenes issues, you know, we'll have to chase production in Atlanta, or Baltimore, or New Orleans. And the dollar that we earn there is actually far weaker than the dollar that we earn here with having to-- sometimes we'll have to set up our guys and ship them to and fro, getting all of our equipment out there, shipping it to Puerto Rico. So we have to do everything we can to support the fabric of our community here, and this initiative does that. And we're really appreciative of the council for all of the efforts and the continued efforts to support the industry. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chef. We're going to get a vote right now, but Paul Finley, Stand Up Film L.A., Donald Washington, all the team, give them a hand. They do the processing. More needed to be done. Madam Clerk, you ready for your close-up? Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Fourth with, thank you, Julie, very much. Patrice, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Mr. Garcetti, good move on this. Next item, 25, please.
Item 25, called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
25, Mr. Garcetti. That's public comment, very good. Thank you. That's why you were once president. Juan Dollhouse Dude, followed by John Walsh. You got one minute.
Yes, Chef Rivera, can I have your card?
Mr. Dude, please.
Yeah, yeah. I want to give you mine, too. I'm running for city council, District 11. What's the item?
You got to look at it, be prepared before. You're not going to get elected. You got to be prepared if you want to be elected. So when you come up here, I want you to speak appropriately.
Appropriately speaking, you got to end homelessness. And I'm giving you the key how to do it.
He is not talking about this item.
Thank you. This is about a garden. Thank you, Mr. Dude. Thank you very much. You got to be prepared. John Walsh. John Walsh has left the building. No other speakers on the queue. Okay. See, Hollywood has a voice in everywhere. John Walsh has left the building. What is that from, Mr. City Attorney?
I believe that's when Elvis is done with his shows.
Very good, very good. Mr. Garcetti, 25. We're going to open the roll on this for the gardens, Mr. Garcetti.